We did not ask for the "M" in "Malay.
Yeah. Hello, Baba Oli. No, it is complete. So where did I say?
And this is Marvin.
It's too much money. The way to do this. You have to be specific to the person with the "M". Right, isn't it right?
But it's better with a "T" instead of a "V".
It's a "V".
I know, it would be better with a "T". Martin.
You just... You're right. I didn't get it.
Don't worry, soon.
Soon, yeah. Soon as, sir.
Soon when you retire.
Oh no, it has to be the "M" first. That went first.
But you don't have to play for New York?
Yeah, I think it's... Oh, my KCR phone. Hello. This is Baba Enk. This is Baba Enk. This is... You use it now, like, on... This is... You can use it now.
Lapit-lapit lang. Don't worry, play now.
Run now, you KCR. You... You know, come here. Come here, Jack. Bow. It's a bit shy, like, a... It's a bit shy, like, a... It's a bit shy, like, a... Hard to make it. KCR, man. How good. That's a polar. That is...
Nabibigyan lang.
Okay, ang ano... Oh, putan na 'yung "M". May I have a extra? Extra.
Yeah.
Hey, what? Yeah.
Yes. Ayaw ka, maya ka, pinis 'yung mayroon.
Yung mga pocket pinis.
Yeah. Oh. Ang san ka na photo? Okay. Hello. One. Sa pa? Naka-post kayo, pinanood mo.
Panit kayo ng balat, ako ala dyan ah.
Ayun nga, naka-live kayo?
Live ito, live ito.
Live, andito kami sa'yo ngayon na Plas Jose Rizal. Celebrate the Hermen Party of Sir Marvin Rotran. The Consular of Snowdon District.
Makisabi ka ng... Galinadip.
Eh, okay na, okay na kayo, okay na kayo. Wutu, wutu.
No.
Yung mga... Katus, katus. O. Ang talaga. May party, katos sa... See, ha?
Badami na camera. Ayun nga.
Dalawa, dalawa. Dalawa, dalawa.
Badami na... Camera. Kala. Ano na, gawin.
Derte, derte, derte.
Ano?
Be bigga, konsabing mo po. Ayaw nila, party, mas gusto nila, may dat. Serye.
May experience na, okay?
Come over here, come over here. Come over here.
Party. Okay. Okay. Please, may go a little closer?
Okay.
I need to a little closer? No, closer.
Okay.
Good? They're all gonna be fair.
Thank you.
You got it.
Thank you.
Maybe me in the middle? I don't know. On the poster? I don't know. All the posters. Look at the shirt. Which, which, which mask? What's on top? Wait, what?
Oh no, Jackie, is this okay?
Look at the...
Sir James.
Real size.
Just run it out a bit. Go straight there. One with the three.
Oh, okay.
Just stick up the three, and then I'll take the
Just one second. Then I'm gonna bring you in. Back money, guys.
Putting my mask back.
Yeah, everybody knows, right? Okay, yeah. Okay. Okay, now, we're going. Alright. Yeah, you got it, guys.
Okay, guys. Very ladies.
Everyone, let's go. Yeah, yeah, everybody, come over here.
Yeah, ma. Almas. Please, almas.
No, I'm on the poster, you sit down. Go, go, go. Sorry. All three, all three. Viva, viva. How come Lionel posters don't have flash? You just didn't notice, because they're clear.
Excuse me.
You didn't notice the glare of the... His eyebrow? That's okay. The tongue's out, bitch, is the new duck face. You know, on social media, instead of this? Like this. That's, that's the new TikTok thing. Okay. Take a picture. We should, we should hold it up. We should both jump in the air, and you guys take a picture while we're in the air. Okay, let's do it. Let's do it. Just one, two, three.
One more.
Okay?
One more. One more.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay, one more.
Alright?
Just count one, two. Okay.
One, two, three. Yeah. Alright? Alright? Is that good? You're off the floor. You're off the floor. That's a good one. Liberal PLQ sign, that's a good one. There, there. Yeah, go, go, yeah. Three up there. A little over, a little over. Look at the, the meat over there.
Oh, yeah. Morning, morning.
How are you? Welcome to Plas Jose Rizal, named after the national hero of the Philippines. Lionel Perez and I did this a couple of years ago to support other Filipino community. And we're proud to have done it. It's a wonderful place. As Lionel was just pointing out, it is now the center of community life for Filipinos in Cota Nacional, Padam de Gras. And there are 15,000 of them in our borough. And they love this place. And I love this place, too. Happy to have been able to do a good service along with my colleague here for the community.
And it shows to what extent, by doing certain very simple acts, we're able to unite the community. Have them, have a... For them, a sense of pride. Sharing their heritage with the entire borough. It's really an example of what living together is all about. And we're gonna continue doing that in the next mandate after November 7.
Thank you.
Now, that's gonna be the new business. You're gonna be an emcee in Hollywood or something. I hear you're gonna be on TV doing that, you know? I hear you were very good the other night.
Thank you.
You know, they had a big campaign launch for the whole city. And they put Stephanie in charge of it. She was one of the two emcees to host the whole thing. Now, I wasn't there myself, but I got lots of reports from her.
A nice article?
It was.
There could be another one soon.
Was it the... Sorry.
Anyways. We were generating a lot of... Well, we have to take pictures. It's Stephanie now that she... Introducing. Introducing the incident group to entertain us.
Okay? Oh. Ready?
But you cannot retire away from the community.
We still count on him.
You will also enjoy what for all of us, what we do. Thank you, Sir Marvin. The host will see something.
Good job.
Good, 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 good. Bravo.
That's one thing, he's resigning, he's not resigning.
I can't believe it.
Yeah.
I will be the next Prime Minister.
That's a good idea.
Then I give the microphone to Sir James for the start of the program. Thank you. Okay, I just want to make it clear that this occasion is not only specifically for our friends who are running as a candidate, and also mainly for dear friend, Mr. Marvin Rotran. It's a couple nights of Rizal. And as you can see in the background, which is being covered right now. Sir Marvin Rotran, KCR. Now, we would like to do a special presentation to commemorate the supposedly, I don't know, but what I know, he is not retiring actually. At the City Hall, yes, but for his services with us. And friendship, it will not end. I know him for quite a while. Anyway, we will present something for our dear friend here, Mr. Rotran. You have the book, all signed. We're calling all the Knights of Rizal to be here. All night. All the chapter commanders, please. The chapter commander and the deputy.
That's fabulous.
Sir Hector. You're in California, where are you? Okay, so the next will be the presentation of the park. The Knights of Rizal Eastern Canada Region. Certificate of recognition hereby honored Sir Consulor Marvin Rotran, KCR. With this award of recognition for your genuine friendship and outstanding efforts in promoting Rizalism, camaraderie, and dedicated service to our fraternal organization. Presented this 90th day of September 2021 in the city of Montreal, Quebec, Canada. Signed, James Delapas, KPR area commander, Sir Jerry Danseel, Montreal chapter commander, Rizalian year 2018, 2021, Edward Claudess, deputy commander, KPR L F, member, and Sir Armando Valanci, KPR L X, area commander, Rizalian year 2014, 2016. And last but not least, Sir Dario Elcoco, KPR L M, area commander, Rizalian year 2016, 2018. Let this... This gratitude appreciation starts from the team to him. Okay. Hold. I'll pass it on to the... Pass it on. Pass it on. Sir Boom. Sir Boom.
Look at Jackie, look at the two cameras. He's doing a lot.
From the CCAQ. Let me call all the council of Canadian Philippine associations of Quebec members, officers, please come forward. We'll award the plaque of recognition to Sir Marvin Rotran. Please, all of the members of the executive board, council, CCAQ, please. Council of Canadian Philippine associations of Quebec, members and delegates, present this award of recognition, Sir Marvin Rotran, KCR. This plaque represents not only your hard work and steadfast dedication to your fellow citizens of Montreal, whom you faithfully and meritoriously served for 39 years in various capacities, including as city councillor, but also our mutual trust and long-lasting friendship. It is also worth mentioning the assistance and cooperation you have relentlessly rendered to the Filipino community for many years and up to the present time. We are so much grateful for your valuable service in promoting the best interest of our organization in our borough, food needs, and the cultural affairs. Awarded this 90th day of September 2021 in the city of Montreal, Quebec, Canada. Signed, Sir Dario Elcoco, President, Sir James Delapas, Founder and Senior Advisor, and Sir Jerry Danseel, Vice President. We'll give the microphone to our re-syndicate, Sir Marvin.
Ladies and gentlemen, I can think of no greater honor than meeting with my friends in the Filipino community at Class Jose De Zal. I know how much national heroism means to me, his life and his work, and given the values that underline the Republic of the Philippines, its meaning. Dr. Jose De Zal's work for racial equality, democracy, respect, and tolerance motivates every Filipino. It's why you believe in him. And that's why I'm attracted to your community. Over the years, I've worked to build bridges among the Jewish community, the Filipinos, but also among the other communities in our diverse neighborhood, Snowden, Cotinash, Naxatam, and Montreal. The vision of Canada that I've proposed and fought for is one that's inclusive, in which everyone feels comfortable and equal, and everyone has opportunity. That's what I believe in this country. That's what I want to see for everyone. And that's what you want to see as well. I've known most of you here, I recognize the faces, I've known most of you for decades. I've worked with your community organizations. I got the borough of Cotinash NDG to recognize the Filipino organizations when you had no recognition, when you had no support or technical financial. I got the borough to change its attitude towards diversity and awareness, if not under attack, but now have entered our lexicon. Our civil servants are sensitive to your needs and ensure that your events can go off without a hitch. All the necessary permits are issued. The borough votes annually certain, financing a certain event. CCAQ has been holding Philippines Independence Day right here at this park for an awfully long time. And I'm glad I had a small role to play with that. I mentioned this place here. Class Dr. Jose De Zal. I want to call out my friend and colleague Lionel Perez. Together, we did this. We worked with the Filipino community. Bert Abieta, he was in charge of the petition that got 1,500 names from the Filipino community to ask for something like this. Lionel and I were your voices at the Borough Council and at City Council, and there was a motion adopted to create this place. Not only get the name, but to relandscaped around this wonderful monument. And it's become the center of the Filipino community. I know how proud you are of your origin, and I also know all of you are proud to be Canadians. That's your wife. I'm going to digress for one moment and say I want all of you to vote tomorrow in case you have not already. You know who I'm supporting, and I know you support liberal values the way I do, and I would call on you, if you have not gone out already, to make sure your vote counts tomorrow. Having said that, one of the things I'm most proud about, I did with Lionel as well. Lionel and I have worked together closely for 12 years now. We're always in the same team, but we've been pretty good colleagues together. One of the things that we did was in February 2018. We moved the creation of Filipino Heritage Month in Cotinash, Naxatam, and Gras. And in support of our efforts, 200 of you showed up in the Borough Council on a night when it was minus 25 to give your support for our motion. It was adopted, and the rest is history. There's now a Filipino Heritage Month Society in Montreal in which Stephanie Valenzuela is an executive member. And by the way, for those of you who don't know, she's the best Maria Clara I have ever seen in any capacity. So ladies and gentlemen, it comes a time when it's the right time to leave. I have been city councillor in Montreal longer than anyone ever else has been. Not just by a little bit, but an awfully lot, a long time. I like my work, and I like what I've done for the community. But I'm 70 years old now. I'm not catching up the bird anytime soon, but I am 70 and a grandfather for the first time. I want to do things a little bit differently. And as well, in my district, there's a young man I support unequivocally, someone who has talent, someone who's contributed to the community, someone who's helped all your groups as much as I have, who is now the chief of outreach for Anthony Housefather, and that is Sunny Moro. Why don't you know this? Sunny does something better than I do already. He'll be a great city councillor, but he still has to get elected, and I'm going to call on everyone in Snowden to vote for him. But more than that, get your friends to go out and vote. What I'm going to ask you to do is, as the page turns, as I pass off the torch, I want to tell you Montreal has been abnormal the last four years. We have an administration that doesn't consult, doesn't care, imposes its point of view, and if you are a citizen that doesn't share their core values, they don't care. They vote. The city has gotten divided, we are not advancing, things are not good. We need to correct that. I'll be voting for Denny Cudair, the mayor, on November 7. And in this borough, I'll be voting for Lionel Perez, my colleague, who will be, I'm sure, the best borough mayor that we've ever had. I don't say that lightly, I have a right to let Mr. Russell help me to consider a friend, but Lionel brings great strengths in terms of governance and finance and relations with citizens. And he's very, very open as a member of a minority himself, and one who visibly a member of minority of working with people of diverse origins. He'll be great. But look at the team that Lionel put together. I've mentioned Stephanie, I've mentioned Sunny, and I'd also like to mention the other members of the team who are here today. Demetra Cos... That is in Cotinash. I call her, I call her Demetra. She is one of the brightest professional women I've ever met, and she's going to play a great role at City Hall. Extremely confident, and she's running in the District of Cotinash. There are fewer Filipinos in Cotinash, but there's still a lot. St. Kevin on Fifth Street, St. Catherine. And it's our job to make sure they go out and elect Demetra as the city councillor of Cotinash. Then again, there's my young friend, right here, Gabrielle Retta. Gabrielle has been helping me at City Hall for years. He's been running the day-to-day operation in support of Lionel as... He's the staff person for the official opposition, and Lionel is the leader of the opposition in his mandate. Again, there are fewer Filipinos in Loyola and Western NDG, but there are some, and we need to get the message to them as well. So ladies and gentlemen, let me comment on what James said. I'm retiring from City Hall. I'm still going to be active, all right? There are a lot of things to be done. On the Night of Rizal, I'll be more active in the nights now that I don't have to be arms-length in the past. I have to be honoring the night because I'm voting funds for all the chapters. In the future, I'll be more active in the nights. But not only that, you can still count on my attendance. I like Filipino food, all right? We're going to have some in just a few moments, but however, I want to let everybody know that the neighborhood now has a lot of Filipino businesses, great businesses, and they include many good restaurants. We see Manil, Pinoy, Panzitan are not the only ones. They're all over Victoria and Van Horn. And before I leave the city councillor, I'm proposing something I call Destination Van Horn-Victoria to get the borough to support the businesses in this area far more than it has in the past, to get tight the profile. It's been a long time since I got that $5 million that Dario referred to for the upgrade of Victoria Avenue. What I'd like to see is that the borough treat minority merchants in the same way as for the other commercial streets in the city. Monklan is a great street, and we will need less help than Van Horn and Victoria, and it's time to pay attention to those streets in our neighborhood. So ladies and gentlemen, to the three, if you want, I want to thank each and every one of you for being my friends and for being here today. We have two elections tomorrow, and once we get that out of our way, it's November the 7. I look forward to working with this new borough council, which I hope will be elected. They're going to be consultative, they're going to listen, and they're going to resolve problems that have festered in this borough for years. Thank you very, very much.
I would like to tell you that she was treated as a sensation in the Philippines because we went on the ambassador tour, right? And my goodness, I feel so secure because the soldiers out there, the Special Action Force, was all over her to protect her, and at the same time asking me, can we have a picture of that young lady? He mentioned to me, and Marvin didn't think, I know he's going to get jealous, but... He must have noticed that the Special Action Force was there. Everywhere, they're blocking forces in case something is going to happen. They know, I know. His number one priority is to save her, not us. That's how powerful this lady here, that's why when I make friends with Consular Marvin, I make sure I acknowledge her all the time because I know the final yes is here. I was just joking. Anyway, so to make sure that you guys are going to be safe from starvation, we're going to start again with introduction of our favorite candidates that I know they're going to be doing good for everyone, not only to our community. So I call on the president of the council. Again, as we said, we will give a bit of a chance to give a speech to our incoming councillors in Notre Dame de Grace and Caudillis. May I call Madame Demetra Costa Rides? Costa Rides. Demetra Costa Rides, Coordinates Candidate.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm the only Demetra running, so just Demetra, if you remember, it's perfect. There's no other Demetra in the world. Thank you very much for the invitation. It's always a pleasure to be here with my friend Marvin. It's amazing that... It's amazing that you're able to mobilize. Your community that has established itself as a force in the neighborhood, your presence, your business acumen, everything is very, very visible, and it's only getting stronger and stronger. Your organization is phenomenal. I'd like to thank you all for having taken the time to recognize me. Please go out and vote, support the entire team. Sunny, Stephanie, myself, of course Gabrielle and Ashley, who's not with us this afternoon, and Lionel, of course, as borough mayor. Thank you all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madame Demetra. And we have Mr. Gabriel Rita, the Loyula District Candidate.
Thank you. Marvin, congratulations on this wonderful, wonderful program. You've done an amazing job as a city councillor, but more yet as an electric official, inspiration to all of us. My key sense on our previous mandate, the funniest and the best project we had last mandate was the translation of the Montreal Charter in Tagalog. We enjoyed it so much, and now it's part of Montreal culture. We have translated, thanks to Lionel and Marvin, we have translated this important piece of Montreal heritage and rules that guide us in Tagalog. And we showcase the community, the importance of this community at City Hall. We have to continue, we will continue, and we pledge to continue with you.
Thank you, thank you, Gabriel. Since Madame Maslis is not here, I think I'm going to call our Filipino candidate, who is very popular and very well-known in the community also. And he grew up with my boy at the same time. My boy is already in Ottawa, engineer Darius Elcoco. He's in each. And I think this is the right time and about time to have a Filipino councillor in our borough.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Maraming salamat po sa inyo lahat. Magandang hapon, good afternoon. I really want to thank you for being here, for inviting us here. I really want to say I've always been extremely proud of being Filipino. Growing up, it was always part of my roots, my day-to-day. But I'm even prouder now, prouder to say that I'm Filipino, prouder to say that I have my community behind me from the Knights of Rizal to almost every single other association that we have here in Montreal. I've had nothing but overwhelming support from all of you, and I'm just so, so, so grateful. Whether you actually met me in person or not, I've received messages, I've received offer of help, support, volunteering, and I'm just overwhelmed. And I'm really, I can't say anything else. Maraming salamat po sa inyo lahat. We're counting on you to vote for us, we're counting on your support, and I know I'll get it, I'm all in, so thank you.
I think I give the microphone to the rest of the candidates of our borough. And now again, we are very privileged because we have a very good friend of our community. Of course, the rest of the team are all our buddies, right? And our ladies here are all okay. I'm going to introduce to you, I don't know if I have to introduce him because it's everywhere as far as Filipino is concerned, the event. He's always there, and he's always, you know, helping us in minor and major problems. He is battle-tested, as she may say. So I'd like to call... I was joking. His name is Mr. Sunny Moro. We got to make sure, all your friends, you got to make sure that the team... I call him Mayo now because he's going to be the mayor. Mayor today. Anything that is identified with him, you should tell your friends to vote for them, okay? Don't forget, I know you guys are the people who matters in our community. I know each and every one of you. I'd like to call on my best buddy, Sunny Moro.
Thank you, Sir James. Thank you. I'm not as good as Stephanie at Tagalog, but I'm definitely better than Marvin. I just want to say thank you for everyone who's here. I really, really appreciate the support from the community. I've been looking for your support for years. I've been trying my best to earn it by showing up at the events, getting to know you and your families, supporting the organizations that you care about, and making the taxes that you pay come back to you in funding and in support. Because Filipinos are equal contributors to Montreal, Quebec, and Canada society as any other community, if not more, and that's something I saw from the beginning. From the beginning, I've been doing this for eight years now, since I was 23 years old. I've been working under Marvin Rotran to make sure that when I contribute, I contribute the right way. And Marvin tells me to go speak to the community leaders behind me to make sure that they get what they need. And I want to make sure that everyone here knows you can come to me even if you're not part of the organizations and ask for help, confidential help, good help. No matter what you need, we will be there for you as a team. Stephanie, Demetra, Gabriel, Ashley, and Lionel, we together have different skills because we want to make sure that whoever comes to us with help, we're able to support your needs. Anybody in the park, anywhere, you live in Vodroy South Shore, you live in a different part of the country. If you know people in Cotinash NDG and they need help, you come to Ensemble Mariel for help, and we'll be there for you day, night, any day of the week, because that's how Marvin Rotran did it, and that's what works. And we're all going to base our actions on the Filipino community to help you because we understand that Marvin's success will be our success, will be everybody's success because we are Cotinash NDG. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Gentlemen, the last but not the least, is a very important leader, the team leader here in our borough. It is very important. Tell your friends, tell your relatives, there is only one borough mayor that's going to be there, here. It's going to be... I'm going to call him Mayor now. Mayor!
Thank you, everybody. Merci, bonjour tout le monde. I think the first thing we have to do, and the reason we're here, is to thank Marvin. Thank Marvin for 39 years of devotion and dedication to his citizens, to the borough, and to the city of Montreal. He is a person that started talking about inclusion... He is a person that started talking about inclusion and diversity before these were words that were known about. He is one that started wanting to empower community groups, community associations, have them have a voice when there was discrimination, when there was inequality, and then when there were things that were very important to talk about. This is the legacy of Marvin Rotran. And it's something that the entire city of Montreal, and our borough especially, has a lot of thanks, gratitude. Thank you, Marvin. Thank you for everything you do. And as was said, although he is retiring, I am certain, knowing him, he's not going to be very far. He can help himself, but want to contribute more to society. And he will find a way to do so, I have no doubt. I look forward to working with you, whatever shape or form or role you have.
I have yourself on number.
He has myself. And he knows where I live. We have a choice to make on November 7th. The Filipino community, the borough, all the citizens. Do they want four more years of division? Do they want four more years of having second-class citizens? Do they want four more years of ideology before citizens? Or do they want a leadership in Dennis Kader, Denny Kader, who understands what living together is all about? Do you want leaders and city councillors that represent you? Represent you, not simply because we have a platform that addresses your needs, not because we can help you with funding, not simply because we've been there before, but because of the shared values we have. Because when you look at us, you see yourself. You are Cotonash and Digi, and we are Cotonash and Digi. That first and foremost is the reason. Because when you're going to want something, we're going to understand your need before you even need it. You're going to be able to call us and to have our number because we're going to be at your events. You won't have to go on the website. You're going to see us all over the place. Not just me, but Sunny, Demetra, Gabriel, Ashley, and Stephanie. We will be there, day in, day out. And that's why we hope to have your support. Not because it's the easy thing to do, because it's the comfortable thing to do. Because when you do it, you know that we represent you. And I think that is our strength. Together, we complement one another. We understand the sensitivity that is needed of the borough of Cotonash, and we have the competence and strength and experience to get it done. So I look forward for your continued support. For the last twelve years, you have welcomed me. You've made me an honorary member of Knights of Rizal, one of the proudest movement as an elected official. We have gone to know each other to become friends. As Marvin Rotran, when it was time, we found a way to get your support for Plaza Rizal. As Gabriel mentioned, when we want to show inclusion, diversity, we translated one of the most important documents in Tagalog in Montreal. And when there was need for events, for funding, we were there. We look forward to continuing our partnership. Mapu, hi, everybody. November 7th, Lionel Perez, Ensemble Maria. Thank you.
You've heard, our borough mayor is committed, okay? So that means that we're going to be just fine. So make sure, I was speaking in Tagalog, sir. I voted against it on Team Naito. But here, Malapit tayo sa nila. Okay? And the best part, anytime. If they entrust their cellphone number to me and the rest of the team, so that means they have nothing to hide, and they're always going to be there. Cellphone, you know, twenty-four-seven, open. So we can always contact them. These are the best indication that they are really going to be dedicated on their assigned jobs. Okay, don't forget, okay? Don't forget. You'll see the sign. We're going to be putting up the sign right after.
Right after the federal election.
The federal election. So make sure, tell your friends, tell your cousins, your auntie and all that. We can make or break any politician here, but we are here to support them, okay? Yakininyo mo vote na Tagalog. We're all going to vote for the team leader also. There's another speaker for our friend, Mr.... We have a cake here for him too. Very hard to... So we have a... Be yourself, be yourself. Thirty years old, thirty-one years old. Up to the present time, that you are the best leader in our community. Thank you very much again for your utmost support during your time as councillor. Maraming salamat. Okay. I think Sir Bert Magiera would like to see something.
Sir Bert. I haven't had a picture with you in a while.
Sir Bert, you want to see something? Last word.
Jackie, can you take a picture?
Oh, everybody. This is not goodbye, but reminder to all candidates and future councillors of Montreal. Those who are aspiring to fill in the shoes of Marvin, you might fail. I advise, and I'd like you, candidates, to be yourself. As I told Marvin the past forty years ago, that be yourself. Everybody like no artificiality. Be yourself, and people will admire you. And you will be forever in their heart. Thank you.
Gabrielle, where's Gabrielle?
Gabrielle.
My very friend, everybody.
You want that plate, sir?
Bakal mo wala ka na plate all the time?
Walang bayad do ha? No, no. Di, bak wala, walang bayad ha?
Okay, let's distribute it to the natin dito.
You are crying?
Yeah, so much meat and delicious. Even if it wasn't, but it was delicious.
No, no, no. Complement each other's food. The honor.
It's the cake.
Yeah, that belongs to you.
It's my wife. It's a great cake.
Thank you.
I just had a huge, I just had a huge piece of it because I enjoyed it so much.
Put your hands on it.
Any kind of... You're on my email. You got my emails.
Where are you going?
Go down, Kevin, where do you live?
Yes, half a body, pare. Okay?
Sunny, look here.